2013, let's start with the Pledge Allegiance. Mr. Carr, would you mind moving us? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Tonight's agenda includes, we're going to start with reading mail, public input at 7:15. We'll have town of Westford, 495 Regional Technology Center Economic Target Area. 7:20, we've got the 300th Celebration Committee update. At 7:30, we've got a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission. We're going to talk about the Land Exchange Memorandum of Agreement, the Morgan Property Status, the Congregational Church Meadow Property, Wetlands Protection Bylaw Amendments. At 8 o'clock, we've got the Park and Recreation Commission for the 300 King Street Project. 8:15, we've got a Land Sale Committee Tax Title A butter Lot Sales Program. 8:30, we've got the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget, Fiscal Year 2014 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan Updates. May 6, 2013 Annual Special Town Meeting Articles, Annual Town Report Dedication, Host Community Agreement Determination. At 9 o'clock, we've got Other Business Consent Agenda and Minutes of Rule. Okay, Mr. Bergman, let's start with the mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of pieces of mail that are in your packet. First is a public hearing notice that the Littleton School Committee has put out announcing their public hearing on their annual adoption of the school budget. It will be on Thursday, March 21st at 7:10 PM. And the meetings, their meetings are now held at the Police Department of the Community Run. We do have their preliminary draft budget from the School Committee, which as Bonnie will talk us about later, is in keeping with the number that we have in mind for a balanced budget or working towards a balanced budget. I also put in the packet a preliminary update that we received from the Study Committee to increase voter participation. There were some recommendations that were contained in here, which I had a chance to review with staff last week and will be working on to try to come up with some outreach for programming on LCTV leading up to town meeting to maybe make our town meeting reports with explanations in plain English, maybe a little plainer or a little more in English. So we'll work on that. Also, we're looking to continue to have the, again, have the babysitting service for town meeting. I think we do sort of cross-check to make sure that you actually, the parents are actually attending town meeting in order to qualify for the free babysitting service. You can redeem your child at the end of the evening if you can show us your punch card. And the COA will also have a ride to town meeting program, which we'll be working on. So that's a general update that we got. I don't know if Alex has any additional items we're looking at.
Yeah, we provided a number of comments about this, but I think the overall attitude of the committee is how much progress we've made in what we've generated last year and anything we're suggesting in here is, at this point, are refinements to the first pass, which was last year. And we're particularly pleased about what LCTV is now capable of and the amount of access to information that the public can have. We hope that that's going to generate more public interest and more knowledge of what's going on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that was it. All right. Well, I'll move on to the public input. Board members, any public input?
I'd just like to mention, congratulate the boys' basketball team making it to the Final Four. The game's this Saturday at DCU. I'm sure you can get all the information off the town school website, so congratulations.
Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, not Saturday.
Yeah, not Saturday. Did I say Saturday?
Yeah. Good catch.
They won Saturday.
They won Saturday.
So Tuesday, tomorrow.
Yeah, we had this discussion earlier where you agreed that we'd all go there on Saturday and see what some other teams.
Any other board members, public input? Audience, public input? Okay. All right, let's move on. I know we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, which I like. Town of Westford, 495-
We can fix that.
Yeah, we can fix that. All right. Town of Westford, 495 Regional Technology Center Economic Target Area. Keith, I believe you are very well involved in this.
Yeah, I'll start this off, but you have a request from the town of Westford to essentially do what Littleton did several years ago, and that is jump on the bandwagon that was started by town of Boxborough. Back in 2000, Boxborough petitioned the state's Economic Assistance Coordinating Council to establish what's called the 495 Regional Technology Center Economic Target Area. This is sort of what I was alluding to when I talked about it plain English, but that the economic target area, the ETA, is a prerequisite in order to have, get this, EOAs, Economic Opportunity Areas, which then lead you to TIFs, Tax Increment Financing. And Boxborough actually invited Littleton back in 2000, and for whatever reason, Boxborough went it alone. But by the year 2007, Littleton itself petitioned to join this economic target area, and we received Boxborough's support for doing that. So now, the town of Westford is also desirous of being able to qualify for the, pardon me, the EOAs and the TIFs, and to do that, you need to start with the ETA. So I'm sure that's clear to everyone, but we're delighted to, I'm delighted, we do an awful lot of work with Westford and Littleton and Boxborough. We jointly submitted a request, as yet unanswered, from Secretary Bilecki a couple of years ago, to jointly form a, be part of the Growth District Initiative. We're still pursuing that. We do a lot of work together, but we're pleased to have Westford here to entertain their request for support for becoming part of the economic target area that we're in. So I defer to my friend and counterpart, Jody Ross, town manager from Westford, and her group that's here.
So I'm going to stand up. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I am-
We've got the microphones right above you. That'll catch you.
Okay, great. I am Jody Ross, town manager in Westford. I actually grew up in Littleton and went to elementary school here, so I feel very much at home being back in the building. But I brought with me Phil Nussbaum and Andrew Stern, and they're both members of our Economic Development Committee, which is newly formed about last summer, the Selectmen formed a committee, and they have a lot of charges for us. And one of the things we did is we researched forming an economic target area. And unfortunately, Westford doesn't really fill the bill of the application in our own realm, so the only way we can actually do that is to join a different neighboring community's ETA. And because we have worked with Boxborough and Littleton on many other initiatives, you know, we felt compelled to ask you if we could join yours. And there's many reasons for it, which I won't get into all of them. I mentioned a couple in our letter to you, but probably one of the most important to our town is that you cannot apply for Brownfield's grant money through mass development unless you are part of an ETA. And we have a mill, those of you who are familiar with Westford, down at 12 North Main Street, the old Westford Anodizing Mill, which the town finds itself in need of doing something with. And that could bring us over a half million dollars in money to help us deal with this mill that's currently in tax title. But we can't apply for that without this. So it's very important to us, not only for economic development, regionalization, trying to create this regional corridor, but also to allow us to apply for some assistance in helping to clean up this mill that we have found ourselves with. So the three of us are here. If you have any questions for us or if we may provide any other information, and we would appreciate your support on this mission, and thank you.
Well, thank you. Board members, does anyone else have any questions, thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I think it's, for a number of years, we've been working very closely with the town of Westford, and Alex and I went to number of meetings earlier, a couple of years ago, in dealing with all the things that are going on in towns like Littleton, Boxborough, Westford. So the throws down, it really seems to make sense for the entire area and aid them in coming to our assistance at times, too.
I think that this level of collaboration and help with one another can only serve us all better and help them.
Makes sense. Now, it sounds like it's a good thing, good move for Westford, good move for Littleton, good move for Boxborough.
Yeah, we're sharing IBM now. They're, you know, the IBM Mass Lab campus is, well, we've like, I think it's been located in Littleton. In fact, it's shared. Twenty-two hundred of the employees are here and under 1,100 are over in Technology Park.
We have more.
We have more.
One of the few things we probably don't have.
And we're working together on the Transportation Management Association Initiative, the five towns that we had started with a year ago of Acton and Boxborough, Littleton, Maynard and Stowe, that we've added two towns to that effort this year, Concord and Westford, which includes the fact that when we looked at where our vehicles were going, where our COA vans or where other, you know, equipment was going, they were going to Westford as a destination as well as to Concord. So we're looking at having a coordinated transportation system that gets folks from the commuter rail station over to, over to Westford and Boxborough or elsewhere. So we're working together.
That makes sense. Okay. All right, well, if there aren't any more questions, audience, any questions, thoughts, comments? No? Look for a motion.
I'm moving that the Littleton Board of Selectmen vote to support the petition of the town of Westford to the Massachusetts Economic Assistant Coordinating Council to amend the 495 Regional Technology Center Economic Target Area, currently comprised of the towns of Boxborough and Littleton, to include the town of Westford.
Second. Root and second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Have you already gone to Boxborough?
We're scheduled-
Next Monday night.
Well, good luck with that. Works out as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much.
Okay. Oh, wow, we're really cruising here.
Jack's here.
Yeah, we're a little bit ahead of schedule to do that.
Jack, Jack Holmes.
Oh, Jack, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I didn't see you back there, Jack. Come on up.
No problem.
How are you, sir?
Very good. Gentlemen.
Welcome home.
Yes.
On your way.
Yes, I will.
I saw the emails.
Do you want me to tell you all about New Orleans? Quick update on the 300. I guess you all know the dates. The big thing that we're doing now is trying to get it out to everybody, what's going on and, you know. And as you know, Saturday, June 21st, this is 2014 we're talking about, will be the opening ceremony. And then July 12th will be town picnic, which will be held at the Littleton Mill School. Saturday, September 6th is really the big day. That's the parade. And the parade, the route is going to be from the high school, St. Anne's area, to, we're reversing it, up to the digital area, with the reviewing stand probably being in the vicinity of the Baptist Church parking lot. Then we go right from there to Nishoba Hill, Nishoba Ski Area, and we'll talk to them. We haven't finalized everything because this is their busy season, so we haven't really had a chance to really talk to them. But they're going to provide us with everything that we need down there so that we can have the fireman's muster, we can have boots, we can have, we have the big fireworks. The one big thing that we want to add into that firework celebration is a band concert. This is one thing that we did not have budgeted. Remember when I came here before, we talked about basically a $200,000 budget, which is no problem. We think we're fine with that. But this band, if we really go work with Indian Hill, we're going to work with Indian Hill, which is a Littleton business, basically, and we're going to add that into our budget. So we're putting another, maybe another $25,000. So we're probably up to 225 in terms of the cost of the celebration for Littleton at this, at this point. One of, a couple of things this does for us with working down there, we get out of the look-a-business, if you will, because they, they will supply, you don't have to worry about it. This has always been a concern. When we have the ball, too, we're over in Westford, so again, we don't have to worry about that. And the ball will be on September 13th, Saturday, September 13th. The closing ceremony will be Saturday, September 27th. That's the one that we don't really know exactly what we're doing. We're working on that now because we have to put all these other things together to work on that. As I say, the big thing that we have now is to get out to the public and for them to understand what's going on in 2014. And in conjunction with that, we are coming, within the next month, we will be distributing magnets, with small magnets, that will go on a refrigerator or wherever anybody wants to put them. We're doing it through LELJ, Savas is going to put them in the monthly bills, and it will include also a letter to all the Littleton residents going over the dates and everything else that we're looking for. In addition, we're going to do little things like stat, maybe once or twice a month, a meeting at the Littleton Cafe where one of the members will, of the committee will be there, and anybody can come in and talk to us at any time about their ideas, what they want to add, what they want to, you know, what they, what they think we want to do. Because that, again, is the big thing that we have to do, is get everything out. We do have some concerns in terms of the monetary things. Oh, excuse me, one other big thing that I should have mentioned is that in our June meeting, which will be the June 13th, it'll be a Thursday, we have got permission to use the new electric light, you know, the New England Power, or whatever they call that building, out back, which holds quite a few people, and we're going to have a big joint meeting of all members of all committees for the 300.
That's this year?
That's this year, right. The June 13th of this year. And that would be like the whole parade committee, which has probably got, what, 20, 20 members or?
We have 10 members, and then we have a number of volunteers.
A number. It better include all the members of all the committees so that we all can get together and talk about, you know, all ideas so that we get a, we get a full, full coverage. From the standpoint of monetary things, Keith had asked me, you know, that, and Bonnie has indicated that there may be some nonrecurring funds available. And we, we said right in the beginning that from the standpoint of the celebration, we would not ask the town for any money. We would be able to do it, and we still think we, that's possible. The one thing in that original $200,000 estimate, we put in $20,000 for the Legacy Committee. This is the committee that's working, and they're working very hard to come up with various things that the 300 leaves to the town, like welcome to Littleton signs, the stone monuments, or various things that they're coming up with. And they've got a whole grocery list, not right now to talk about, but this is what they're working on. And so that if there is any money within the town that the town wants to, we would add it to that, to the, to the part that the Legacy Committee has to work with, rather than to the celebrations. So they, because we honestly feel that the celebration, what we already have and everything else will take care of it. So what we would like to do at this point is, and I realize there's a, what is it, there's a March 22nd deadline on Warren articles.
Yeah, practical deadlines. Next Monday night.
Yeah, and this, this sort of just surface, so, you know, let me put it this way, that I may come back and say, look, we'd like to do something different within that timeframe, if that's, that's okay. But at this point, you know, we don't have a concrete thing, any concrete. The one thing that we are concerned about from the standpoint of money is, we know that we're going to take contributions from a lot of people. We've already taken, basically, we've taken two so far contributions. One to the Cooper Foundation, which has given us $7,500, and another 25 will come in 2014, and from Knoxville Estate, who gave us the proceeds from the circus. Now, my understanding is that you people voted to accept the Cooper Foundation, so we have no problem with that. And you have this $500 limit that anything over $500 has to be approved by you. Understand that we will be, I can't tell you how many, but we will have many, many contributions over $500, over $500. So that is something that we're looking to you to decide how we, how we handle it, you know. Because, you know, we've already got one in, and I don't know what, you know, I imagine that's in our account, the one for the, for the circus, but, you know, we need, we need some guidance on that. We can't, you know, we can't tell you what, how, you know, to treat that. So we're going to, we do need some-
But the problem is, rather than have to have a board vote to accept every donation, that it would seem like we could amend the original vote to allow for the, you know, generic acceptance of, you know, any donations that come into that fund. And the expenditure, I'll have to look up the vote, the expenditure is by the committee on its own authority or with approval of the Selectmen?
No, I think you gave that to us our own authority. Yes, I think we-
It comes through on the warrants.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so ultimately, yeah.
The disbursements are handled the same as in our public funds.
So all we've got to really do is go back and amend the establishment of the fund and the way we accept our money. I mean, that should be a no-brainer.
It seems to me like we should have to-
We could just make a motion to waive the requirement for the 300th committee.
Is that enough to get it done?
Yeah, if you said that, I'll, I'll have the, your formal motion will officially amend your prior vote to allow for the acceptance of, by the, by the Finance Department of any donations that are made to that fund without, without requiring a vote of the 300th committee.
Yes. It sounds like a motion, yeah. It sounds like a motion to me.
So I'm good with that.
Someone going to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
That's based on Alex's original motion, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get the money, Jack.
Now, have you, anybody got any, any questions that you?
I do have a question. We met, gosh, it was probably a couple of months ago now, maybe even a little longer than that, about grants.
Yes.
Has any progress been made on that at all?
Yes, yes, we have, we have met. Paul and I, I met with the P&amp;R Director.
Kate.
And, and we've met with Keith, well, we, you were there for that, for that meeting.
Right.
And we are working on that, and that is, that is part of, when I talked about additional monies, that would be the grants type of thing for, maybe for a celebration, you know, there might be something there. We're looking, we're looking both private, public and private.
Sure.
Because places like IBM, they, they don't give any contributions, but they have a big trust fund that gives out money for various things, even to the, to the extent of planning, where town planning and things like that. Now, that, we have found that most of that comes to large, larger municipalities. Never to, we've never found a small municipality, which we have to consider ourselves, but by the same token, to look at the, at the size of their involvement in the town of Littleton right now, IBM's involvement with the, with their, you know, their buildings and all, you know, we think that maybe we can, we can crack into that, and we are working on that. And Paul Glavy is sort of taking the lead because he's a member of the Legacy Committee, and he's taking the lead on that to get, we are working actively for our grants and, yes.
And Kate's helping right now.
Yes, yeah, she will help because she has a lot of expertise in having done that in previous, previous places, yes.
All right, I'm good. Anything else?
Anything else, good.
With respect to the celebrations and parade in particular, is it your intent to have the town absorb the cost of fire, police, and other people of highway overtime?
No, 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 we will, we are working with the various three basic departments there in the Protective Services to work that out, but no, we will, we as a committee will pay that. We will not look to the town to absorb that cost, if that's, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
No, 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 we-
Not that I have a problem with. I just wanted to know.
No, we want to, we want to be self-sufficient. We want to make sure that we are self-sufficient in this whole thing and as much as we possibly can be.
I'm good. I just, I think, I've worked closely with that committee now for a year and a half, and I think that what's important is the meeting that comes up in June for two different reasons. Number one, it lets the public know what's going on, and hopefully it gets covered by cable TV and local, local news. But also, under Jack's direction, there are so many committees and so many people working in different areas that don't even know that they are working on the same thing, that it's good for them to get together. And Jack has arranged that each one of those groups, whether it's the Parade Committee or the, or the Picnic Committee, each one can make a little presentation of what's going on, so everyone has a general idea. I think it's a great idea. It's a year ahead of time, and it'll, it'll start the energy flowing for the, for our big celebrations.
Good, and may I add one thing, and I forgot, I should have, we have formed that Friends Group, remember I finally came in and talked, the initial talk I had with you. We have, that Friends Group has been formed. They're, they've got all their certifications and everything else. Cindy Napoli is the chairman of it. And they have basically said that they are going out by running auctions, by running all sorts of fundraisers, mostly the end of this year, all in preparation for 2014. They are, they are looking to come up with 100, 1,000 of our 200,000, which is fantastic. And they will operate entirely separate of our committee. The only thing that we have done is said they could use the logo that we have, that we have reserved for the town. We said they could use the logo, whatever, whatever they, whatever way they want it. And we're working on memorabilia, or they are, in conjunction with us, so that, you know, we're working, we're working in a lot of different ways, and you just have to bring it all, bring it all, bring it all together, because it's, it's all volunteer work. It's 100% volunteer work, and we just have to bring it together. But we will, we will, we'll have one heck of a good celebration.
It sounds like you're doing a heck of a good job in the process.
Well, I don't know about that, to be honest, but, you know, no, everybody's working. Everybody's, you know, everybody has their niche, and, you know, occasionally we cross paths, but then we try to bring it back together again.
Excellent. Good. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update. I don't know if anybody in the audience has any questions for you. It doesn't sound like that's the case. Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, thanks, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That puts us right back on, right back on track. Okay, we've got the Conservation, Recreation, Land Exchange Joint Meeting, the Park and Recreation Conservation Commission. See a lot of familiar faces back there. All right, folks, this point, this is just basically, I think this one here is the land exchange between the property down by Apple Dior and then the property down by the track, correct?
Right, and we have both the Conservation Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission, who have voted respectively to declare the, their properties as surplus and available for the others' use. And Town Council had prepared sort of a, a comprehensive agreement to be executed not only by those two boards with respect to their own properties, but also the Board of Selectmen, so that we would have our mutual agreements to bring forward this proposed land exchange to town meeting. It does require action not only by a two-thirds vote of town meeting, but also a two-thirds vote of the state legislature under Article 97 of the Amendments to the Constitution. It's a, it's a procedure that has to be followed when you take property out of deed and use like conservation. And the standard that they set at the state level for reviewing these, it has to be unanimous vote of the sending board, which it has been in both cases. And there has to be no net decrease in the, in the conservation property as a result. We can, so this land exchange will meet, will meet those tests, and where the parties are in agreement, we thought it was well to just get together and be sure of that and to then have the Board of Selectmen vote to execute that document as well. to then have the Board of Selectmen vote to execute that document as well so that we'll be ready to head towards town meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll open this up unless you wanted to debate this here. Any comments from the Conservation Commission or Park and Rec?
We received the outline from.
Name and address for the record.
Sarah Hewer, Vice Chair, Littleton Conservation Commission. We received the document on Thursday, so reviewed it. There was only one question of the intent, the way it was written, just to clarify, that there's a 25-foot buffer zone, that we need to make sure that that particular zone is held within conservation.
Do you have the page, Sarah?
Right on the front, please.
So it's page one.
We have the most current.
25 foot, whereas the Conservation Commission has determined that the upland, non-wetland and 25-foot buffer zone portions of the partially open space are surplus to conservation.
Right, so the 25-foot buffer is not a surplus, so that just means that the 25 buffer stays under direction of Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So we received that.
Okay, so we'll make it clear that.
Exactly.
So just need to clarify.
Exactly, other than that, we're fine with that as written. We can only just see this.
Yeah, so the 25, so the intent is that the 25-foot buffer is part of.
So basically, we're leaving the wetlands and the 25-foot buffer for the exchange of the swap.
And Park and Rec, you good with that?
Yep, that was discussed early on.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure the final. Brian, we need your name for the record.
Brian Richter, Chairman of Park and Rec.
Thank you. Okay, so unless there's anything else here, I'll look, you folks are gonna need to make a motion as well, right? On your end or have you already made your motion?
We're already done.
They're all set.
Yeah.
Okay, just point of order here. All right, so we need to make.
We've got the Board of Selectmen, excuse me, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the execution of a memorandum of agreement, MOA, with the Conservation Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission for the proposed land exchange involving one, repurposing the portion of the conservation land at the rear of Chauvin Village over 55 site instead of active, for active recreation. And two, repurposing parkland off Great Road near Apple Dior subdivision instead of conservation, no, instead as conservation made, excuse me, instead as conservation land, said MOA to be subject to the approval as to from by Town Council.
All right, do we need to add this piece in here with this, this minor change?
We'll address that in the approval as the form. Yeah, we will include, yeah, as amended, yeah. I say as amended and then make sure.
As amended.
Okay. Move and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as opposed? Okay, congratulations. All right, we got one down. Morgan Property Status. Got a lot going on with this one.
Yeah, this is something that we've been talking about for a while. We had met jointly, the three boards had last August, I think, when we started the discussion about this. The Park and Recreation Commission had prepared a list of sites that it was prioritizing for future fields and the Morgan property was at the top of that list. One of the things that we had identified at the time, however, was that there was an existing agreement that had been executed back in 2004 between the Board of Selectmen and the New England Forestry Foundation, which appeared to indicate that there was a requirement on the town's part to place the conservation or agricultural preservation restriction on the Morgan property. So Town Council was tasked to research that point and in his discussions with NEF through their attorney, what we heard back is that NEF was of the opinion, which they reduced to writing, and which is presented to the board for approval in a document, that NEF is of the opinion that essentially the requirement in that 2004 agreement has expired. That is, that the requirement that the town placed, must place the property, all of the property is conservation or agricultural restriction as part of the deal, well, NEF, the other party in that deal, has indicated that that provision is no longer operative and has expired. Therefore, if you wanted to use the property, or I think the case is a portion of the property, not all of it, the desire on Park and Rec's part is to take a portion of the, that portion of the property which is suitable for field and to, and to use it for field with, I think, the balance of the property to be not used as a field, the use for conservation, that it could be used for conservation purposes. That if that's, if that general approach is agreeable, then it would be appropriate as a first step for the Board of Selectmen to execute the agreement with NEF, which amends your 2004 agreement, essentially relieving you of whatever that prior agreement said regarding the Morgan property. That would be step one. Step two would be to then determine which parts of the Morgan property could be developed and which parts should be retained. And we've got some, you know, preliminary information in a, in a plan that Park and Rec had attached back in August. There's another plan that Finley has, has prepared preliminarily that we just got today, which, which identifies, I think what they share is that identifies the field locations as what would be useful for Park and Rec with other parts of the property which would not be useful to Park and Rec, which could be retained for conservation purposes. So I think that's sort of where we are, but we didn't, what, we didn't want, we didn't want the Board of Selectmen voting on a document in a vacuum absent, you know, hearing from, hearing from the other boards of what their thoughts were about it.
Okay, the two boards haven't met, the two commissions haven't met on that yet. We would like to talk about it and meet together, Conservation Commission and Park and Rec for us. And then throw out our ideas and stuff, but we still have to delineate the wetlands before we do anything, so, you know, possibly meet first and then have it engineered to delineate the wetlands.
Conservation would appreciate that because we haven't had any, this is new for any of us to have a meeting.
Okay, so at this point, what you're saying is you guys wanna have a meeting first before we move forward with any changes?
And then have another joint board.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that there are two steps involved here. One is that the, is the, is the agreement of the town with the third, with the third party. The other is the internal agreement among town boards about how the property should be used. And I don't know if this is something that folks would be comfortable doing, but if the boards vote to execute, if the board voted to execute this agreement with NEF, if, all that does is relieve us from what the, from, from an external obligation. It does not relieve us from the, you know, internal obligation, if you will, of properly dividing up this, this property and perhaps to make the vote contingent on the two boards, Conservation and Park and Rec returning to the Selectmen with a, with a plan or inviting you to, rather to.
This is a logical first step right here.
This is a logical first step. But let me ask the question, if we do this, we execute this with NEF, so NEF's out of the picture. What happens to the land if an agreement can't be reached internally? Where does it fall under? Whose jurisdiction?
It's under the Selectmen's jurisdiction now, it's under the Selectmen's jurisdiction later, until you vote to give it to someone else. So, so the idea is that we're, and I think what we wanna be clear about, the intent is to say that you're inviting Park and Rec and Conservation to bring back a joint plan of how, of how this property should be disposed of and that you won't take any action on it until you get that. Because we're not, we're not, right now, it's not in conservation use, it's not in recreation use, it's in general municipal use. It's not, it's nothing. It's not in any particular legal use. And it's, so that's why it's under the care, custody and control of the Selectmen. The intent, though, is to have a portion of it to go to one board and the balance go to the other.
Thoughts on that, Sarah?
And you may find someone else that would like to hold the CR. NEF is just one of many nonprofits, so you could look at something else. I think most people thought that it was under control of that, so it was news to some people that it wasn't, was not passed through in '04.
It actually says in here that that was the intent to try to.
Well, we don't want to do that.
NEFF and town agree to make their best efforts to sell an agricultural preservation restriction in the properties described, so on and so forth, so.
I mean, I think the intent of the, this board anyways, is to give it to the Park and Rec and Conservation Commission to decide where, what uses or what, what pieces of the property they wanna use, but, and whatever's left over for Park and Rec, or Park and Rec wants this amount and the rest should go to the Conservation Commission is my understanding would be. So let's execute this, which is basically some cleaning.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping for a NEF agreement that is expired. So let's do this and give the authority to the Conservation and the Recreation Commission to, as Keith said, come back with the, come back on the plan.
I was looking for the terms and where the expiration is and I don't really see where it is.
You have the letter from NEF.
Well, it's in, it's in the agreement that NEF has offered to us in 2013.
First page.
I'm looking at the agreement signed by the original Board of Selectmen, 20th of May 2004. Is it in that agreement?
It is not in that agreement, that the other party to the agreement is telling us that the obligation has expired and it's put it in writing, which is what we asked them to do.
So NEF is saying it's expired.
Correct.
And they're putting it in writing.
And so we're acknowledging their position that it's expired by executing the amended agreement.
Sarah, I was gonna ask you a question, but go ahead.
Wouldn't we be diligent enough to make sure that we're following what the intent of the other Selectmen were at that time? So if there, if NEF is not holding it, perhaps there would be someone else that would hold it as.
So you're saying Conservation Commission wouldn't want to hold?
No, it's dual, it's dual, so it's two. So you have someone you work with, so.
You know, I don't see any harm in holding off on this until you folks can work together and come up with an agreement that makes sense for us to move forward.
How do we know if the Morgan property's gonna be used for recreation or not?
Yeah, I mean, this isn't dependent on it.
See, I, I agree with what she said. We have an agreement from the original Board of Selectmen who, as I recall, worked long and hard to craft this and, and the terms of this don't talk about an expiration. So it's all well and good that NEFF tells us that it's expired, but there are no provisions for expiration in the original agreement. And so I think, I agree with the chair. I think we should find out that this is definitely the way we're gonna go rather than just simply allow the agreement to expire.
But I would think that for the betterment of the town, what's being offered here is something, the playing fields that are vastly needed and the rest of it will be trails and conservation anyway, so it's a plus-plus for the town. It's, kids are getting playing fields and we're still preserving all that land. There's nothing that's gonna be built there that's, as far as stretches, there's no municipal building being planned, it's just.
Good use of the property.
Yeah.
Brian, could we execute this all at once versus doing it piecemeal?
Well, by taking a vote tonight, we're saying, yes, you should go and look at it.
We vote tonight, it allows, it allows those two commissions to sit down and say, go, this part of land could be used for this and maybe some, some other part of town could be used for something else. It's, there's a lot of things tied in.
Rick, yeah.
Rick Finley, me for Brook Road. Just as a clarification, Alex, I believe the original language referred to APRs on the property and NEF did get APR money for their property. But during the course of time, the law changed and we couldn't even get APR money today if we wanted it. It's not, it's not administered to, to communities. It has to go to individuals or nonprofits.
Have we got a record that APR money was actually obtained for this property? I recall that.
It was obtained for NEF, NEF, NEF got APR money for theirs. We did not follow through with it in time before the law changed, so now we can't, we can't get APR money even if we wanted it.
So it was NEF that got, got the money?
For their.
Got the grant?
For their property.
Okay.
Don?
Yeah, Don McEver. Yeah, essentially NEF executed a provision there, the town did not execute it inside. I think it's good if the two boards sit down, talk to each other. I think they'll come to agreement. I think that informally there's been some agreement and I think common sense will prevail. But it's probably worthwhile holding off. Let them talk to each other, figure this out. There's no necessary rush.
I don't think you can discuss any of these properties to the Selectmen.
Keith, can you, can you say that again?
Well, I, I think, a concern that I would have, our next agenda item to discuss yet another property of, whose use has not been determined, I don't think any of these discussions about future property should be taking place in a vacuum. We try, we, by having three items on your agenda tonight, the land exchange, the Morgan property and the Congregational Church Meadow property, what we're trying to do is in one sitting, recognize that there are, that there are competing uses for, for properties in town and that an appropriate way to address those competing uses is by selecting which ones are the best for particular uses. And that all of those decisions, I think, are best made together because if you make them by themselves in a vacuum, then you're not, then you're not, may not be taking into consideration all of the needs. For example, if you take no action on this and the next one you say, okay, we'll do Church Meadow property for agricultural use.
Where's the athletic fields?
Where's the recreational property? You know, we're trying to settle, so I think you can either handle all of them together or you handle none of them.
I don't think that this is a matter of whether we're supporting recreation or not. I think it's a matter of whether this is the right time to vote this. My preference is that, that when, when they've sat down and had their discussions and agreed and they, and they've looked at the property and they've done the wetlands, the terminations and all those other things, and they say, yes, we can do it, I think that's the time for us to make this move. I think it's premature otherwise. And, but this isn't a discussion about supporting recreation or conservation or anything else. This is a discussion about how best to proceed with, with the goal in mind here, which is to find some additional land for Park and Rec to put fields on.
But one ties into the other, that's the, the part that I'm concerned about is how can we discuss the next parcel if you, if you have two commissions that need things, one for open space, which I, from what I understand in the readings that was presented to me, that the Congregational Church Meadow property is excellent for agriculture, it would be seen fitting to get this part done so they can, we can know that maybe for town meeting, we could be moving forward to buy, purchase that for that one reason. Otherwise, you have the Park and Rec that's not getting playing fields they need. I think this, it's, I think we're making it more complicated than it actually is. I mean, the land is still gonna be a playing field with all kinds of trails and conservation land anyway.
This motion doesn't, this motion doesn't dictate anything in regards to who gets what and what gets who. We're leaving that up to the commissions. This motion and the vote we're taking tonight is basically agreeing that the Morgan property and NEF agreement expired. That's what we're agreeing to right here. And that, and that we're, we're saying that we agree with NEF that, yes, it has expired and we should let the two commissions meet to talk about the property and the uses.
I'd like to just address Joe just by asking a question. Would you be inclined to vote this if we did, if it was not likely that the fields would be there or there wasn't a use for those fields? If we, if we weren't saying, we wanna put recreation there and somebody said, well, this agreement's expired, we should just vote this motion, do you think that, that you would wanna do that?
I guess I'm not following what you're saying.
We don't, we don't know, we have a nice drawing here and it looks like it's gonna work and all that, but we don't have an agreement between Park and Rec and Conservation. And this, this is a precursor, part and parcel to putting fields on that piece of land. And then, but if, if that does not work out, then we're, we are, we're essentially taking control of the land.
Well, it could, I think the answer is that it could be the first step for making it available for recreation. it available for recreation by removing the legal, by removing the agreement that, that you, that the town entered into in 2004, which creates an, an external requirement to, to, to meet. But I don't think that it changes the, the, our desire to have Conservation and Park and Rec figure out which are the appropriate parts of that property for their respective uses. And let, and it doesn't preclude looking at it and saying, you know, you know what? We thought that we could put a field there, but upon further review, we can't. Or that, you know, we think we need this much land as, as conservation area, but we can live with, with some other configuration. I think those, those details are to be worked out. I don't see anything in, in, but, but if you don't, if you don't relieve this agreement, then, you know, and, and you're taking the position that you can only put it in Conservation, then I think that quashes exploring the use of recreation.
I think we all agree, I would think, we all agree that if the playing field thing works out, that we'd like to see it. I don't think that's what the discussion is. I think the discussion is how we get to that point. And if that is our intent to nurture the playing fields, then this motion may actually be better served waiting until they say, yeah, we have an agreement, and we say, okay, here's your motion, we go, we will proceed.
The vote tonight, again, is based on the NEF agreement. And, and what it's doing is, it's taking that third party out of the equation. That's, I can't, I, I can't explain it any clearer that this, that's what this motion is doing, is taking NEF.
There's no misunderstanding.
Outing, so why not do it so that we can tell the two commissions to say, okay, now you don't have to worry about that. Go on your way, get the land, get the property, come back to us, and let's vote on whatever they decide.
And we certainly can tell them that. We can certainly encourage them to do that.
It's a simple motion, really. And I think, Joe, you were right. We're making it too diff, more, more complicated than it really is.
Yeah, I'm, maybe there's a simpler approach, rather than initially doing the agreement with NEF, revoking the IDL CR. See if, you have two sketches in front of you, one from Park and Rec, one that was done by Sol, that's been doing Conservation. What if they present them, and if that's compatible with agreement there, read to that, and then move on to that.
You just heard from the two commissions. They haven't even seen it tonight, so they're not, they're not willing to say anything about it.
No one's seen the legal documents, but they have seen the sketches which are submitted, one from Park and Rec.
Thank you.
No. No, I got mine about six o'clock tonight, and I could see problems with it already, so I think we have to meet.
Yeah, Concom hasn't seen it at all, I think.
Yeah, so. I think.
Hang on, Jim. Go ahead.
I think it would be good to find out that, yes, we can work it out, and the two commissions to meet on it. I mean, you know, there's a lot of homework that we have to do beforehand, and we're not gonna do it overnight, so.
Could we have presentations by the two people, put together the sketches, to understand what the sketches are supposed to do?
Well, I think that's.
Another meeting.
That'd be another meeting, for sure. Go ahead.
I don't think it's necessary. The sketch that I did was basically to look to see where the stone walls were, and the area that I left open could be expanded, may need to be expanded. I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to vote on anything tonight. Was not intended to be so, but.
James Pickett, Chairman of Conservation. We spent probably two or three months going over the agreement with Park and Rec, measuring the land off and watching it, to make sure everything would fit. And I think it's only fair that we probably do the same here.
Sure. So, so, back to the question. So by us basically executing this motion, it will take us out of agreement with NEF. Does that impede Conservation Commission or Park and Rec from still negotiating and doing what they need to do to work together?
I don't believe so.
It's a trust issue.
Yeah, so we can, we can make that happen.
I think the other thing that we have to do, though, too, is delineate the wetlands.
We're gonna be talking about, that's, that's D. We're talking about wetland protection, bio, no.
No, no, no.
That's a different.
Sorry. Make a motion.
Okay, I think we've got this sorted out. Thank you, guys. Go ahead.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote relative to the May 20th, 2004 agreement between the Town of Littleton and New England Forestry Foundation, NEF, to execute the agreement with NEF, providing that any obligation the town had convey Conservation Agricultural Preservation Restriction on the Morgan property in the 2004 agreement has expired.
Second.
Moving second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Good discussion. All right.
And so we, we will, the board will invite the two boards to submit your joint proposal to the board.
A proposal. Yeah, and it should be, yeah.
Our record will show.
Right, and we can have the two maps put on the table, whatever comes out of it.
It's a trust issue. It's working together.
Yeah, absolutely. And nothing's gonna happen to that property in the meantime, pending further discussion.
Sounds, sounds like a reasonable consensus compromise.
Okay, Congregational Church Meadow property. We're really busy here tonight with Conservation Commission and Park and Rec.
They prepared.
And they got the church?
Excellent.
Good evening. I'm Warren Carroll, Congregational Church of Littleton, and I have with me tonight, we have Reverend Vern Swett of the Congregational Church. We're going to expand our meeting house on 330 King Street. Sunny School, a new addition. Expand the parish hall, more outreach. After a long time of owning our Church Meadows land, we've decided as a church that our mission can best be done right at home, 330 King Street. So, in order to pay for our expansion, it'll be a, an addition put on the north side of the church. This is the parish hall, it's be completely redone. Expand the Sunny School, do a lot of infrastructure items. We've got mold issues, that kind of thing. $1.6 million. And in order to pay for that, we're, we're doing it two things. First, we're doing a capital campaign amongst the members of the church that can raise something on the order of 700,000. And we have to sell Church Meadows to not make up the balance, but get a good head start towards that $1.6 million. The church has been here since 1841, and we're looking to have it go for another 140 years after that. So Church Meadows, if I may. Church Meadows is, right now, about seven acres of land. This is a great road up here, and this piece of land here is where the daycare is. We sold that two acre lot off about, I think it's like three years ago now, four years ago. So we have seven acres of land. We, as a church, voted unanimously, I was happy to find, about three weeks ago to sell the property. And, and as such, we took some steps in order to try to figure out what is the value of this land, because we, as a church, we also voted that we would hope to get the highest and best used value for that land. The appraised value is $415,000, and that was an appraisal done by Avery Associates. I have half a dozen copies here, and there's also a copy of the land, plan, done by GPR. I do not have the full report. I'm told that I'm gonna get an electronic version of that tomorrow or the next day, and I will forward the full report to Keith. The, we had Goldsmith, Prest, and Ringwall look at the land from a standpoint of what could we do with that land if we were to subdivide it? And the answer is, it could be subdivided, and I apologize, I think the word is A in our report, approval not required, into three lots, one, two, and a reduced frontage lot to the back. This plan was prepared at the hest of Avery Associates so that they could more clearly do their appraisal. It took into account wetlands, national heritage sites, test pits, septic systems, the fill required around systems, septic systems, and the fill required around houses, that kind of thing. And that's where the, the value of 415,000 appraisal value came about. One of the things that, in reading the report, we also learned that while the, the appraised value of 415,000 is kind of like the as-is condition right now, just right now, that's what it's worth. A developed survey price for a developer selling these three lots, one, two, three, fully engineered, fully approved, would be right around 485,000. So on, on the low end, we're at the 415,000. At the high end, we're at the 485,000. And, and when you get your report, that is shown on Keith, on page 31 of the report. As, we have not placed this property on the market as yet, but already there are two interested parties in this land, one of which is the Town of Littleton, the other one is a private residential developer. We recognize that the, the town, if you vote to proceed to use this, to purchase this for agricultural land, that obviously we have to get to annual town meeting. We have a large hurdle there. We need a two-thirds vote to purchase any land. We recognize that. But we're willing to work with you on that. The private residential developer, he has not given us a specific offer as yet. He has promised one this week. We don't know what it is. He also wishes, he said, that he could close within 30 days based on a cash sale. Now, if you find that this land is desirous for agricultural or conservation purposes, you know, we are certainly willing to agree that we would not sell this property to any other party if you're already committing to put it onto a town meeting. I mean, our timeframe is a spring of next year construction, so we have to have our capital campaign and this proceeds from the sale of this land in spice. So that will drive how much of the expansion we do at, at the church. We're looking to work with you on this. It's a great opportunity for our church, for this community, and that's my pitch.
What, what's the land being used for now, and what, what, kind of, I know you explained this to me once, but it's very interesting information.
Thank you. Presently, the land is used in agricultural by two groups. One is the, the Garden of Church Meadows. They're a nonprofit organization, and they are dedicated towards growing fresh produce for loaves and fishes. And last year, they delivered about 2,400 pounds of fresh produce to loaves and fishes. The other group, and the community gardens is up, right up near the front by Great Road. The remainder of the land, the two fields, the upper field and the lower field, is farmed by a family of our church members. They went through a program for entry-level farmers done by Tufts University, and as part of their agreement with that program, they have to give, I think the number is eight percent of their produce to the Lowell Food Bank. So that's, that's, we saw that as kind of a mission outreach, and that is presently in the, they completed three years, and we're starting year number four. They're gonna certainly be farming here in 2013. So it is in agricultural now. We hope it can remain in agricultural.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. So you'll provide us with a full report, Keith?
Yes, we will. Yes.
So, so, we've had, there was a preliminary discussion with the Community Preservation Committee at its meeting last month. We're scheduled to have, to, to further discussion with the CBC tomorrow night. What we're, and I will say that I had some, some informal meetings with representatives of conservation and recreation interests last, last week after the CBC meeting, just to, because I knew there were competing, potentially competing uses, and, and for this property. And what, what I was quickly hearing is that there was a general consensus around agriculture being, being a preferred use for, for this location, and that if recreation needs could be met elsewhere, that they need not be met here. And that's, you know, frankly, that was part of the hard sell of the last discussion, was to make sure that everyone's interests are being addressed. But we were clearly hearing that, that agricultural use was, seemed to be the consensus. And if, and if that was the case, then that pointed us to some specific fundraising or, or grant opportunities that we would want to be able to fully explore. We've been, you know, one of the meetings that took place last week involved the Sudbury Valley trustees, who've been very, very supportive there in the Littleton Conservation Trust, that there are some grant opportunities out there that we would want to be able to explore. Nothing's finalized, but we, but it's, it's on the list of things to do. And also, submitting a funding request to the Community Preservation Committee was, was something else that we wanted to, to pursue. And so there are two motions that are proposed tonight. One is to insert an article on the warrant, which would allow us to work out all the, the details between now and town meeting, and, and to send the signal to the church that the town's interested, that yes, please give us the time to, to work on it. Secondly, would, would be to authorize the submission of a, an application for funding eligibility with the Community Preservation Committee, and we can, we can fill in that the estimated sale price is $415,000 in the motion, rather than the 450 placeholder that we were using. What, what I would want to, to do, though, is to just call upon Bonnie to summarize what some of the funding opportunities are. Because we're talking about a $450,000 acquisition, when they're frankly, they're, we can't, we cannot do it all through the Community Preservation Fund the way, the way it's set up now. So we would need to be looking at some other strategies. We don't have to finalize any of those strategies tonight, but I think it's important to just get out on the table what some of those might be. Bonnie?
The main item for Community Preservation Funds, we're estimating that the balance in the accounts for the end of this fiscal year, so ending June 30th, 2013, you know, would not be sufficient in order to make this purchase. So I was trying to look at, you know, what other components could we, could we utilize to make a purchase of this type of nature? So, in looking through the, the town finances, I looked at the debt service reductions that we've been able to recognize this fiscal year from the refunding of the high school debt. We saved approximately $200,000 inside the levy limit. Again, it's, the high school was not built with a prop two and a half override, or a debt-excluded override. So that 200,000 that we saved by refinancing at a lower rate is inside the levy limit and available. Under our financial policies, we only use that type of funding for capital wide purchases or one-time purchases. That 200,000 has not been factored into our current financial plan because it just happened a few months ago. So based on that, and in taking a look at that in conjunction with the Community Preservation Act funds that are available, if you took that 200,000, in addition to 68,000 or, or some amount of money, from the 70,000 that's available from like accumulated cell tax. from the seventy thousand that's available from the accumulated cell tower revenues, and deposited that into the Community Preservation Account, you would bring the town's contribution level up to that three percent maximum that's allowed under the state. Currently, we have a one percent surcharge on the residential class, and that's it. You can go up to the three percent. If you go up to the three percent, you get, first of all, the state match is higher, and second, you could qualify for an additional round of funding if it's available at the state level, which it was available last year. Last year, at the one percent level, we qualified for thirty-six thousand in state matching funds. If we went up to the maximum, if we deposited this additional two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, we'd qualify for a hundred and seven thousand in state matching funds based on last year's round. So in taking all of that, I know it's a lot of numbers and a lot of components, but in looking at all of that, if you look at the, I think it's the third page of my memo, if you did that, there would be enough money in the undesignated fund and the open space fund to make this purchase and still have funding remaining in the Community Preservation Fund.
Have you looked at borrowing against the CPC funds?
We could, but we don't have any debt that we're looking to issue on the town side at this point. So to issue debt on a four hundred thousand dollar note would be too much in bond issuance costs. It just would be exorbitant compared to the amount of issue. If you had a couple million dollars in debt to issue, then it's worth it. On four fifty, it's really, it's not.
So you have no anticipated bonding coming up?
No.
One-time shot in the CPC.
So, and we're not saying tonight that we're deciding what the funding sources are. There's a lot of work to be worked out. We've got to pursue vigorously the grant opportunities that are out there. We do qualify under the land grant program, local acquisitions for natural diversity. We've been funded under that program before for the Yap property. We've got a half million dollar grant towards a nine hundred and thirty thousand dollar purchase. We would qualify for about, for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so on a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar purchase price under the land grant. But we, but they haven't, they haven't released the timeline yet for that grant. It might come, it might come any day with applications due in, you know, July. But then we, even that, we'd have to, we'd have to reach an agreement with the church on the timing that we, you know, that if a grant award, for example, under that program for two hundred thousand dollars isn't made until November, then we would not be allowed to close on the property until November, which may be a deal breaker with the church. These are, so there are strings that are attached to some of the things we want to look at. And it all begs further discussions between the parties. But what we're really looking to do tonight is to preserve the opportunity to work on it between now and town meeting. And if we can put together the plan and come up with the funding sources, great. If we can't, then, you know, then we will tell the church that we weren't able to do it and understand that they'll be getting on with their life. But it's an important piece of property, it's on the, you know, it's part of the corridor that we want to preserve along the two-way. Then it's, and there's a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of folks who are willing to do that.
They still need to have an appraisal done on our side too, correct?
No.
No?
We don't need to do an appraisal?
For the land grant, I think you do an appraisal.
Well, yeah, okay, there would be, need to be, yes, that's correct. There would need to, we'd have to acquire a second appraisal for the land grant, that's correct.
So I mean, today we're, we're talking about-
Avery is the one that we would have hired anyway.
Yeah, it's strictly appraisal.
Question on that funding mechanism you just talked about. That's not borrowing, so that's no longer a two-thirds vote, is that correct?
Yeah, this would be appropriation.
It's a two-thirds vote because it's land.
Okay.
But it is inside the levy, so we're not looking at-
And a grant application already has been submitted for fifty thousand?
Yeah, right, included in your packet was a fifty thousand dollar grant application that Sudbury Valley trustees have put in under a particular program. And we will be putting our heads together to try to figure out a funding strategy. But by putting it on the warrant and submitting, authorizing, submitting all of an application to CBC, I think we can get started on this.
Yeah, Warren, if we, if we came up with funding by November and funded this project by now, is that too late for you? Because if you're looking to cut-
It really is, because we have to go into our final design and our permitting and planning in the summer and fall in order to be ready for a spring construction start. Because some of, a lot of the work, or a significant portion of the work, is external to the church, and the other stuff is all internal to the church. But we cannot form our project until we know how much money we have in our capital campaign.
Yeah, I think, well, we could structure, again, not to decide everything tonight, but we could certainly structure the vote of town meeting as we've done in the past, where we get an authorizing vote at town meeting in the full amount. That, I have to say, that would presuppose that we follow Bonnie's recommendation to put the cash in first to take it out, with the provision that the, that that amount of the town meeting funds is then reduced by any grants that we get in my date, so that you would know by the town meeting vote whether we have a deal and whether we're going to buy it. The only thing we wouldn't know until November is whether the entire amount is coming out of the town's coffers or jointly from the town and a grant source.
So that, my head is swimming a little bit, but that sounds right.
Yeah, we don't have to resolve that, but we can, you know, we can work on those details.
We very much want to work with the town if at all possible. The other thing I want to make sure is clear is that there is this other potential buyer out there. And I know you use the number four fifteen. But this other potential buyer potentially could offer significantly more. So it's clear that what, we are all kind of looking at possibilities-
We'll offer four fifteen because we're limited, yeah.
Four fifteen is your limit.
We're, I have to say, as a matter of policy, and not, you know, subject to the board overruling, as a matter of policy, we bring to town meeting, we only bring to town meeting a number that's supported by an appraisal. So four hundred and fifteen thousand is the number, that would be the one, you know, we can't reasonably ask the town to pay one of that.
If money, timing of money is an issue, a bridge loan is also possible. This is the time we talked to trust representative, we've talked to a couple of other groups. So, yeah, funding-
A lot of people are looking to make this deal happen, and I think we could, you know, so we'll want to get together and make sure that we all understand what our respective needs are and how to best structure that in the deal.
Terry?
I hate to bring it up, but would any of, would any of the money that's potentially due to the town from the HCA be available in time?
Yeah. No, and the reason is, is that that money becomes available for appropriation the following fiscal year. So like a year from now.
A year from now will be available.
Yeah, you should say John Avery has actually served cream and crop for doing appraisals. So that's probably a very solid appraisal.
All right, so we have a couple of proposed motions here. So are we going to take on both of them or just select one?
We can do both, I mean, we're going to have a placeholder, and we're going to tell the trustees- They're going to see an amendment for four fifteen.
No, no, it's both.
Unless there's another discussion, let's go to a motion here.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert an article on the warrant for the May fifth, two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting to acquire by purchase gift or eminent dom- eh, can't say it.
Eminent.
Eminent, thank you. Domain for agricultural purposes for the fee interest in certain parcel of real estate, one ninety-four Great Road, owned by the Congregational Church of Littleton, comprised of seven point one six acres, more or less shown as assessing map lot U six, lot four, and as lot four B. On an approval not required planned dated April ninth, two thousand and eight, said article is to be subject to approval from, asked to-
Form.
Form by town council.
Move the second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, move that the board of selectmen vote to authorize the submission of Community Preservation Committee application for eligibility for Community Preservation Act open space funds for the acquisition of said property, estimated sale price of four hundred and fifteen thousand.
Move the second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Onward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Donation is very gratefully accepted. I have a pledge, Pat. We're not a nation now.
Heads and tails.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we've got wetlands protection bylaw amendment?
Yeah, and we, and we still have James Pickard here from the Conservation Commission that the, the commission has, had asked town council to draft a proposed article for town meeting, which would authorize them to adopt rules and regulations. And in those rules and regulations, it's their intent to do things like establish no-build zones and buffer areas and so forth. But the key would be that town meeting needs to vote to essentially amend the bylaws to grant the commission the authority to adopt rules and regulations. So that's the need of what this proposal seeks to do. And I understand that your board, James, may not have seen the documents. So what I think would be appropriate and the way I've drafted it is so that you don't have to come back. Insert the article subject to the approval of town council. So the commission and town council will work out the final form of this article, and we will include that language in the warrant budget. But the draft proposal has been prepared for their review tonight, if they're viewing it.
So you haven't even voted on it yet?
No. No, we voted on the concept of it, but we haven't actually seen town council's version at this point in time.
So we want to have a placeholder.
So we're just creating a placeholder?
Yeah.
So this is simply going to empower them to produce rules and regulations like, say, the Board of Health can do? Is that correct?
Well, nothing's like the Board of Health can do. Just about anything to anyone.
Pick another example if you'd like.
Yes, yes, to, so that the specifics don't have to come back to a further town meeting vote to amend the bylaw, that it gives them the leverage to have clarifying conditions put on through adoption of rules and regulations. And they're basing this on bylaw language that exists in some other towns, and town council has, you know, confirmed that that is something that you can do.
We have a meeting next week, right? I mean, you guys are going to talk about it tonight?
Probably. Would we? Hope so, if I get up to it.
I guess, I'd like to see what, I'd like to see the commission vote and come back with us what actually they're talking about. I mean, it seems like we're talking about changing a bylaw. I know it's just a placeholder. So I guess I'd, I don't know, I'd like to wait till next week to see what you guys come up with. Because I don't understand, what type of rules and regulations is it? What do you, what, give me an example of, because I couldn't get it out of this question.
Well, right now, the biggest deal is we'd like to have twenty-five-foot no-disturbed buffer between, for any new construction. We've been running into people, as much as they close at eight feet to the wetlands, and we've appealed it, we've denied it, gone to D P, and they've overruled us. And what they've finally said is that we have to have that ruling-
Stronger language.
Language in order to prevent, they would go along with us if they would, if we had to rule one of them.
So, so you're saying that should that language be incorporated into the new bylaw? Is that what, but, but I guess what-
We're not out to rewrite the whole thing.
Right, right.
It's just that this is one thing, it seems to keep coming up all the time.
I guess my concern is, the explanation was that it gives you the authority to write any other rules and regulations without going before the town. And that's where I got, you know, I would like to hear more about what that means.
I would suspect it would have to be reviewed by the selectmen too.
Okay, I-
This is just a placeholder.
I understand that, I understand that. But we have next week, I'd like to, you know, let them at least look at it and read it and come back and say, this is what we voted on, you know, these are the regulations we want to have. Or we want carte blanche to be able to write, you know, any rules and regulations in consideration.
Keith, Keith, is there a plan to have them come back next week with the final? Or are we looking at later? Because this is just a placeholder, they may take a couple of months to, or a month or so to get this done before town meeting, right?
No, that, the drop dead deadline is the week from Friday at noon, because that's when the warrant closes. So we have, we have either tonight to, or, if you adopt the motion that's proposed, then that would give the commission and town council right up until that town meeting deadline to work out the language between the two of them, and we would, we would include it in the warrant that, as it closes.
Right.
We've done that in some cases, and in other cases, you know, we've required the full language. If you're not prepared to do it tonight, then we would have to have them come back next.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to put any pressure, I'm just, I'm just adding, I'm trying to wrap my head around what type of change you want to make in the bylaw. And what I heard from Keith and what I read is a match. You know, it just could be me too. So that my concern is that we're giving-
Yeah, the first, when I first heard about it, and I understood from James that the substance of what they were looking for is to have a twenty-five-foot no-build buffer, my first thought was, well, why don't we just write into the bylaw that town meeting passes twenty-five-foot no-build buffer? And, but it was my understanding that it's the adoption of the rules and regs in general that is what the commission's looking for, not just one issue.
What rules and regs though? Rules and regs that are already written so that we can tell the town, look, this is the bylaw and this is the rules and regs we're trying to adopt?
No, I think that, that if they're specific, then that's what Keith was just talking about, going into the bylaw. I think what they're talking about here is the ability to promulgate rules and regulations as they go, as others do. So we, we're not going to be approving, or at least the way I see it, we're not going to be approving the specifics of what they want for rules and regulations. We're only approving their ability to promulgate them.
Right, which means they can change the bylaw what they deem necessary, and that's where I have a concern.
They can do rules and regulations.
Right, they can change the rules and regulations of the bylaw without going before town meeting. If it's a twenty-five-foot buffer, I have no issue with changing the bylaw for that and let the town people decide. It's a matter of letting a commission be able to go in and change a bylaw without going before town meeting. That's where I have.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be changing the bylaw per se. The bylaw would be enabling them to make rules and regulations that stand outside of the bylaw.
Well, they still are, they're still, they're still empowered by the bylaw, hence they're changing the bylaws, original, original passing, you know, the original commitment. So that's, that's my only thing, you know.
Well, I guess I would want to read what town council's put together before I go any further. We'd like to preserve the slot for us to-
The town council proposal is, it's pretty, is pretty simple. Essentially, it just amends the bylaw to add the ability to adopt rules and regulations, period. So it doesn't get into the specificity of what the subject matter is. What, you know, while we understand that one of the purposes is to establish a twenty-five-foot no-build buffer, it doesn't, it doesn't say that in the bylaw and town, and, but at the same time, town council is satisfied that the mere act of adopting language, authorizing rules and regulations would be enough for the, a conservation commission to then adopt a rule, a regulation that prohibited building within the twenty-five.
Correct, and which is essentially changing the bylaw.
And if you can do that, what else?
Right, so that's where I get my concern.
Sir?
Bill Brown, Seven Old Orchard Lane. One thing from listening to this is that, make a judgment about the thing about establishing rules and regulations, but I think that whatever comes to town meeting, want to have the twenty-five-foot buffer in the whole town to vote on, because that sounds controversial. And you don't want to have the onus on the conservation commission dealing with people that are, you know, planning to develop something next year, and they only have twenty feet. You know, let the town vote on that, plus possibly this additional provision to develop further regulations.
Well, I guess, I would wonder if we're not, I mean, I think I agree with what they're, what they're-
what they're trying to do and they're trying to solve the problem. But is it something that if we push this for this town meeting, we end up with a bit of a rushed job? And we don't have examples of what they would want for rules and regulations to enter into the discussion and who might hastily say, well, we'll put this in the bylaw and we won't put that in the bylaw. I wonder if we're, you know, we're putting them on a bad spot if we ask them in a matter of two weeks to, to prepare all of what they want for rules and regulations.
Well, I, I think though that it's, I mean, the, it's the conservation commission that has asked to have a town bylaw proposal submitted. And fact is that there's a deadline for that and it's a week from Friday at noon. So either we work out, either all that needs to be worked out by that deadline, we work out, or we miss the deadline and we don't bring it to town meeting. If that's, and I'm not, I'm not advocating that we rush to get there if we're not ready to get there, but that is the timeframe. So whatever answers we think we need, we need them, you know, if not tonight, by next week.
And maybe as a recommendation, maybe you just look at this and say, well, why don't we just get the twenty-five-foot buffer piece taken care of now, since it's one item? And then your rules and regulations and what you want to control, you think about that a little bit more and come back with something on a later date.
Yeah, kind of amend the existing bylaw to add the twenty-five-foot buffer.
Right, and that way there, that's one subject that somebody can wrap their head around.
The voters would know what they're.
Exactly.
Exactly.
It's not a.
I would agree however, that that has the potential to be controversial.
Well, we were looking for something to get people to come to town meeting.
Sure.
Talk about the private standing.
They would know specifically what the topic is.
Yeah, it's, it's easy to discuss, it's easy to, maybe that, that's a better approach.
So the friendly advice is to be specific on a twenty-five-foot buffer in a bylaw, that's what's, that's what the most important thing is. And then we can have a.
And we're not saying, all I'm saying is, and Alex said the same thing, is if you want to move forward with that rules and regulation piece to the bylaw, let's really have some, take a conversation about it. And I think that's pretty.
But I guess what I'm looking for is to know that we've got a slot for at least the twenty-five-foot, if that's agreeable with the board members.
Well, if you, if you want to go up to your meeting and come back on Monday, we're gonna, we can vote that motion absolutely. If you, if that's all you want, right now, we don't have that before us. So if you, if you can get that through town council back for Monday, it'll be on our agenda for Monday.
Give us the input, whatever input you can get from your commission tonight, if your, when your meeting continues, then that will put that, whatever that is, on the agenda for next Monday night for.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we're a little off. Park and Rec Commission, three hundred King Street Gift Fund expenditure.
What we'd like to do is, in the summer of two thousand and twelve, the selectmen gave approval for donations, to solicit donations. And what we'd like to do is, we have received donations. We didn't realize that we did have to come before you to spend some of the money. We have spent some of the money already on signage and I have to apologize, ignorance. But we do have approximately twenty-three hundred dollars in the account that we'd like to start engineering costs so that we can have, instead of just an artist rendition, we can have something a little bit more. We've met with historical society, historical commission and stuff, and they're on board with what we want to do and we're on board with what they want to do. So it's, it's really worked out well, but we would like to be able to start engineering costs, you know, the engineering and use that money twice as cost.
Yeah, and I, do you have how much we're talking about? Twenty-three hundred?
Twenty-three hundred.
Okay. You just said that, didn't you?
I'm gonna do by how much they raise.
Sorry, brain freeze there.
Yeah.
All right, this is easy. That's, I'll look for a motion, unless there's any other discussion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Recreation Commission, Recreation Commission's request to expend funds from the special gift fund for the renovation, rehabilitation and maintenance of the facility located three hundred King Street and obtain engineering design services.
Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your time.
Thanks for hanging out a little longer.
It's been our pleasure.
Mr. Vanoudy. Come on down. Land Sale Committee. Got a lot of parcels here.
Talking about purchasing parcels, it's like selling.
Yep. I mean, getting back on the tax rule.
Last time when I was here, we talked about getting more parcels for the abudders program number one. And then we discussed what to do with adjoining parcels at the town. And the decision of the board was to separate the parcels, put what can be put into the abudders program into the abudders program. If an abuddar purchases, great, if they don't, then after that, we can join the parcels and possibly put it up for auction. The other piece that we talked about that night was getting some more parcels for auction. We approved two parcels back in November, I believe. To make it worthwhile for an auctioneer to come to town, we have to put some more parcels in.
About ten?
And we have a list here.
These are for the abudders program?
These are for the abudders program?
These are for the abudders program that has to go to town meeting for approval, but in the memo, a couple of them. Sheets down in the packet. There's a list at the bottom of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine parcels for auction.
We're not gonna make, we're not deciding that tonight though. Right, it looks like we're just doing the.
The bottom of your memo is this?
This is on February twenty-second?
February twenty-second, no.
Starts with Oak Road and it works its way down?
Yep.
So they're listed on here too?
Pardon?
Question for you, why would we, why wouldn't we just combine the, like the three, three lot, four lots on Dahlia Drive and auction them all as one big lot versus doing them all a little separately?
Right now, they're separate, but when we look at them now, you see that it's a nice hill, it's almost like a whole block of.
Right, of properties.
Yes, and we could get an auctioneer to come in, talk to the assessors about what we could do to join the parcels in.
Yeah, I would think you'd want to sell them all as one big lot versus selling them in similar.
You probably want to sell them for maybe like three different lots, three house lots or something.
You make three house lots out of that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The intention was to let the abuddars have first right of refusal.
And that's, that's the ten that are above. The ones that are down below are too big for the abudders program. But we need, we want to bring some parcels before you so we can.
And these are. And these have been vetted through the other boards of towns.
Yes, the Land Sale Committee has given others.
So what do we have on listed on the abudders program for forty, forty-seven hundred square feet? Almost forty-eight hundred square feet.
Forty-eight hundred is one.
Oh, it is? That is four thousand.
No, five thousand.
I'm telling you.
That just, that just makes it. Boy, if the person doing the surveying is off just a little bit, that person's in trouble.
So we can walk through the parcels individually if you like, or?
Have you got people interested on these?
Of the ten, I know three will definitely be sold. Have people come.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm good. I like what you've done with this. You've got a process in place here, you know, and making sure that we're vetting it with other boards to make sure there's no strategic value to the town. These are under the forty-eight hundred square, you know, I'm personally good for that. Unless you guys want to discuss it or debate it, or anybody in the audience.
I participate, now it seemed to be good. I went solemn on site, no issues with any of it.
I'll look for a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert an article, I can't see it tonight, on the warrant for the May eighth, two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting to add the following properties to the tax title of butter lot sales program established by Article Ten of the November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven special town meeting. MAP U-ten, one, U-twelve, one-ten, lot size of four thousand point one square feet Narcissus Road. MAP U-twelve, one-fifty-eight parcel, one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine point eight square feet Pine Road. U-twelve, one-fifty-one, two thousand square feet Pine Road. U-twelve, one-twenty-two, four thousand point one Oak Road. U-fifteen, parcel ninety-five, four thousand point one Suffolk Drive. U-fourteen, ten, four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine point nine Shakea Lane. U-fifteen, one-eighty-two, four thousand point one Middlesex Drive. U-fifteen, parcel forty-four, four thousand point one Ipswich Drive. U-seventeen, parcel two-ninety-six, four thousand point one Washington Drive. U-seventeen, parcel one-ninety-eight, four thousand point one square feet Forest Street.
Move in second.
Second.
Move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed. The ayes have it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you need another piece?
Let's talk.
To discuss those.
Okay, well, we can discuss them, I don't know on this, on the front part of this, but let's talk about it. Okay.
It's probably better off looking at the assessor's maps in the back.
Why don't you walk us through these one by one here so we understand?
I mean, with the bullet, I'm not gonna, I'm sure. So U-twelve, one-twenty-three on Oak Road. The, the yellow parcels, the yellow colored parcels, if you look at the assessor's maps.
Oh, not the colored ones?
U-twelve, the first assessor's map. Two parcels on Oak Road. We just put in one-twenty-two into the abudders program. There's a house at one-twenty-one, a new house. You have, you see that correctly? U-twelve.
Oh, here it is. Okay.
Okay, Oak Road?
Yeah.
Two little yellow parcels on Oak Road.
Okay, it looks like.
One-twenty-two and one-twenty-three, both same size. One-twenty-two just went into the abudders because it's a home and one-twenty-one, there's no home that abuts one-twenty-three. However, the person who owns one-twenty-four would like to build a home there and he would like one-twenty-three to expand. So he's approached the town to purchase that lot. Ordinarily, the size to put into the abudders, but it doesn't fit because it's nobody owned.
What's he gonna add up to? It's not a, it's not a house lot, no.
It is, it's sixty by a hundred.
Isn't it?
Yep.
So is the plan to build on it or is the plan?
He's planning to build it, like a little extra piece of, of the lot to expand.
Expansion, okay.
So there will be a house there anyways.
He's gonna build on the adjacent one.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking, the piece of.
The one-twenty-four he owns.
Right.
He's building there, which is six thousand square feet.
Okay.
Which is enough.
Yep.
He'd like one-twenty-three as expansion.
So why, why wouldn't that go on the abudders?
Because it's not an existing home there right now.
Oh, it's just.
There's no home that.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Oh, I got you, I got you. It isn't a butter, but it's not built yet.
Exactly.
But does it say in our, in our, in our abudders program that it has to be?
Be a house on this, adjacent house. So it would go into auction, he would be definitely bidding on it. The next one, U-twelve, ninety-nine Narcissus Road. It's that one parcel that's sitting by itself.
Okay, is that kind of the same scenario?
No interest, it's just an open lot on Narcissus that's potentially buildable or potential for somebody to, an abuddar to purchase it. It's just too large to go into the program.
How many square feet is that?
It's within sixty by a hundred.
So I guess the, the evaluation process too, I'd like to know about. When we put these out to bid, minimum bids and all that.
Um, we would talk with the.
Assessor auction?
Auctioneer. They're well versed in what to do in those things. He's already realized it's not the best strategy to talk about pricing.
Yeah.
Wouldn't make sense until you know. Question behind you, I want to call, go ahead, Jerry.
I guess the first comment on any piece of land is its value is, can you build on it, which means can you get a septic system in? And would it be worth it, towns wild to do a couple of test pits so you know what you got? And you're selling it as is, it's pure speculation.
It's sold, exactly, it's sold as is and the purchaser.
And speculators.
Right, but I'm saying the town doesn't realize top dollar.
Top dollar.
Well, unless they've done their homework and they think they can build there.
Yeah, but I'm saying they win the town.
They'll bid on it. I mean, developers, I would think.
How big is this one?
Six thousand square feet.
Sixty by a hundred.
I guess, which lot are you talking about?
Narcissus Road, right, yellow.
I get Narcissus and there's yellow on both sides of it.
It's the odd one right there.
Ninety-nine.
That's that guy.
By itself.
One by itself. But it says on our chart, it's only four thousand square feet. I'm gonna make it to one.
All right, got it. Your, your next chart down.
Yep.
I know, it's getting late. Let's see.
Now, across the road on those parcels that Joe was looking at, that the town owns, all those straight across.
Yeah.
We'll talk about one-fifteen, no, one-fifteen was pulled out. But those lots right there, one, two, three, four, five lots straight across there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a potential for.
One big lot.
One big lot to.
Well, is, is one-ten, where's one-ten on this map? The one we're putting into the abudders program on Narcissus Road.
One-ten is the, the one on the right, the first one.
Oh, okay, it's way up there. Okay, gotcha.
What the person who owns one-oh-eight, that whole lot has approached the town to purchase one-ten, so it's, it's going out there. If she'd like to purchase it again, she can. If not, then we can decide later on to put all those parcels together. The, the person, the committee pulled off one-fifteen, pending on what we're gonna do with all of those parcels, but the person at one, who built the home at one-twenty-one is also interested in that one-fifteen lot, just to have more of a.
Backyard.
Yeah, backyard, but we pull that, the committee pulled that off, depending on what we decide for all those lots.
It would make sense to combine them all, combine them all.
But again, they're, they're in a butter, right? And what size is that lot?
It's too big.
It's sixty by a hundred. That one lot is.
So that's two. The next one on the list is U-thirty-two, eighty-one. It's the last assessor's map. Way on the right-hand side.
What number is it?
Eighty-one. It's the, the last yellow parcel on the right. See where it says U-twenty-three?
My Colonial Drive.
Colonial Drive.
Man, I need, I need like a magnifying glass.
Yes, and I have a tissue earlier.
We need another bank of lights on that.
I got it, okay. It's in the middle of the street.
Middle of the street, middle of Colonial.
Just before the bend.
Person who owns lot eighty is building a house there and would like eighty-one as expansion. He's already approached the town.
And is that another sixty by a hundred?
It's, it would fit the abudders program, but again, there's not an existing house there, so it doesn't fit the program.
I'd like to talk to that. It's next to town-owned land. We did have an area concerned that if it's adjacent to town-owned land, that it would not be in this, at least in the abudders program, but this is the auction program. I didn't realize that was coming up this evening. If you go to the, I guess was, it must be the east side of eighty-one, you get the Smedbeck parcel town-owned, then you have Long Lake land. And eighty could not be buildable except for putting a septic system on eighty-one. And if you ignored the, what's around it, I think it probably isn't economically feasible for the town. You have one kid there going to school, I think you lose money. So why are we encouraging marginal development?
Has that, has that lot been vetted through the committee?
I, I was out voting, but Concom didn't have a chance to really look at this. I, I was out voted, but Concom didn't have a chance to really look at this. I didn't think this is coming up this evening. It's not on the agenda. The butters parcels are on the agenda.
Okay. All right. So, there's a question mark next to Colonial Drive, but you guys vetted it through, or you put it through Conservation Commission as well?
They, they, I was helping them out when I was there. They haven't looked at this. They should look at it. We should look at the Long Lake land ownership.
And, and you believe there's some strategic value to this land?
Yeah, because in fact, it's conservation land. In fact, if you look at all the town-owned, uh, areas there in Conservation Area, there's a whole idea when the Long Lake proposal went in saying the town would protect areas here. They would not dispose of land if it were conservation. It's mosaic of a lot of small parcels, uh, Muslim tax titled parcels. I think that needs to be looked at. Why not pull it? And if everyone says, okay, auction off, and so be it. There isn't a timely concern here. Just one, one small parcel.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Steve?
It's, um, the, the furthest lot away on, on the drive. The town owns already almost all the parcels going out from there. Person who's gonna build a house there.
A developer, it's...
It's a developer.
I don't think the town loses money. Go to the east side of U-23. Town owns a lot of property there.
Can I ask you to, to just make sure that Conservation Commission's good with that? And make sure it's been vetted through them?
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's keep moving.
And U-17, this is the block of parcels that's the...
On Dahlia?
This one, this is, um, Dahlia Drive, Stone Place, Grove Road. That whole lot. There's a home right now at 380. That's the only home in that whole section. All the yellow parcels, the town owns, um, they're all taken for taxes except for the second parcel on Stone Place. I can't really use that number, 332, I think.
Yours is as good as mine.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to, um, have town council do a, a title search just to make sure there was no restrictions on when it was given to the town, um, for, for use. I've been approached by the person who owns the two bottom parcels on Washington Drive, by her attorney who wishes to purchase all those parcels. But I think it would be so good, um, getting for other developers in town may see that as valuable property.
Is she in a butter? Any of them?
She does not own a home. She just owns the parcel.
Oh, just owns the parcel.
There's, like I said, there's one home on, uh, Grove Road.
And the whole block?
At 380 and the whole area. You can actually see it on the overhead maps.
Does that, Stone Place goes all the way through to Washington?
The third.
It doesn't connect. It doesn't connect?
Oh, it connects.
On pa, it's on paper, but...
The third color map, you can see it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You see, that's just the one hole. So, we can talk to not only the, the auctioneer, but the assessors on how we can join some of those parcels together to make a most of them.
Maybe you can make two or... Two or one really big one. Go ahead.
Maybe about, at least two, possibly three.
So, what's your plan with these auction lots? So, you're just compiling the list. I hope you got a few more and then...
Um, no, if, if we're good with this list, except for that, um...
Colonial Drive?
Colonial Drive one, which I'll check back with Conservation. But if we're good with this list, I'll get in touch with an auctioneer and hope to have something this spring. Because I know there's, um, the two parcels that we put in back in November, the people who originally expressed interest and really want those parcels. So, we're chopping at the bit.
Yeah, and ju, just verifying this with Steve. We're not talking about U-1737. That was, uh, the place that I mentioned again, got had reviewed and thought parking lot might be appropriate.
Is that on the list, Tom?
No. You don't have... Not on the list.
Good, okay, because that's another conversation. It may come up later, but it needs to be figured out.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a motion for that, and then we've done a review on this. So, you'll come back to us with, uh, the final list and once you talk to an auctioneer and timelines as to when we can...
Yeah, I hope to get something going this spring.
Good. Nice job. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. Lana, you're up next.
Okay. So, I have a budget update, and I just wanted to highlight some of the changes since your last update a week ago. The Light Water Commissioners have met to review the pilot that the, uh, Light Department pays the town. It's payment in lieu of taxes, just in case you're wondering what a pilot means. Because they are a town-owned entity, they're exempt from paying homeowners property taxes. So, they give us a payment in lieu of taxes. I did meet with Savas and he did bring it, you know, forth to his board, and they formally voted to support it in the following manner. 400,000 in a general in lieu of tax payment, which is based on approximately a real estate value of about 15 million. They in, also agreed to pay for the, or continue to agree to pay for the Goldsmith Street debt service payment, which this year will be 97,841. They've also agreed formally to pick up the IT expenses in our budget that they used to pay out of there. So, we've, we've increased our budget appropriation in IT to cover these expenses, and they're offsetting them by way of this pilot payment. So, we had already planned for the additional expenditure. This just offsets that expenditure, so it's a zero impact to us. And treasure and accounting services. This is, again, an annual, um, agreement. We base it on about 50% of the budget between the treasurer and the accountant's office, and it's for processing accounts payable, payroll. So, it's, it's a reasonable, um, assumption. So, in total, it's 765,841 dollars. In addition to that, the, um, the Light Department does provide about 20,000 in funding to the school department by way of grants provided for high school science and safety. They also pay for their public safety needs as far as police details as we go. So, as they're needed, they pay for them directly. So, I, I would like to say that this has been a, a very, um, easy experience to go through with the Light Department. They're very supportive and understanding in going through these formulas. And it's, it's a nice thing to, to go through. There are other communities that don't have the relationship that Littleton does with its Light Department. So, um, in, in light of that, um, update, the budget deficit for fiscal '14, because we had already appropriated a plan for the additional IT expenses, the, the deficit is now down to 97,372 dollars for fiscal '14. So, we're getting there.
Excellent.
Yes, very, very happy. The things that I would also like to highlight that we're continuing to monitor are both, um, in the revenue components, estate aid. Again, we're continued with the level funded assumptions. Should Chapter 78 get, come in a little higher or, um, general municipal aid, that will be used to close that $97,000 gap. Um, it wouldn't be assumed as another funding source for an additional appropriation. It's gonna be used to close the gap. And I just think that that's important to make that distinction. We're continuing to monitor the local receipts. Again, our, our excise bills are going out, so we're gonna monitor what they come in at the end of the month. Then I'll have a better idea of what we're...
I know, I got my bill.
Everybody's getting them. Um, and we're also assuming level funded for the state assessments and charges, both on the town and the school side. And we're looking at new growth at 300,000 for the exchange value. And we continue to hold the, the staffing at the fire department at that additional coverage level. So, we've made a lot of progress. Um, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to, to get this resolved once we get some better state aid figures. But I'm pretty pleased to be in this position at this point.
When's the school voting on that? About the Thursday?
21st.
Next Monday.
21st.
Yeah, week from Thursday.
So, I think we'll be...
Still holding 16 in full?
Yes, at this point. That's the, um, that's the message.
That's great, Mark.
So, yeah, we'll happy with that. The next one is on the, uh, capital improvements plan. The finance committee did make some recommendations at their last meeting, and I'll go over some other things that they, they talked about at that meeting also. But what we have tonight is a plan in front of you that supports, um, 1,262,799 in capital expenditures. Again, inside the levy, there are no exclusions or, um, capital exclusions or debt exclusions planned. I thought to make it easy that I would separate the items that were not funded in there at the end of the memo, and I'll just kind of walk you through it. Um, as part of this plan, we have a, a million 459, um, available, and we're looking to support 1,262,799 in expenditures and then appropriate 196,914 to the, the newly created capital stabilization fund for future, um, planning. And basically, the, how we did that is we had a million six in requested items from the departments, and, and they were put in priority order and reviewed with the departments, but with the finance committee and with the board. The finance committee is, I, has identified eight projects totaling 384,000 dollars that they're recommending be deferred or removed from the plan for this fiscal year. And maybe looked at possibly for future, um, planning. Those items are, there are no changes, um, to the previously discussed items. The only addition is that they did go through the school department request at the last meeting. They did recommend the deferral of two items that were on the, um, bottom of the school department's prioritized list. It was for the high school walkers at 30,000 dollars and the Russell Street School Playground at 30,000 dollars. So, it was 60,000 in, in total items. And they funded, they recommended funding for all of the other items that were requested. And again, that was based on the discussion with the school committee chair, providing his input as, you know, what could be deferred if, if need be. Everything else has remained the same. We do have the community preservation fund, um, items. They, the finance committee hasn't really voted on them yet, but they are included in the plan here. They, they should be voting on this next week. And the other things that, um, were discussed at the finance committee meeting were, we had some discussion about the, not a subcommittee, but a working group committee to get together to discuss the financial policies for the town, the fiscal policies for the town, and having a representation from the board selectmen on that committee or that group.
Correct.
So, they were looking for some input from the board on who would be...
I would love to.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll volunteer for that as well. My understanding is the meeting schedule's not too aggressive, so...
You know, the policies are working very well. Steve Vinuti and I will participate as, as staff reps, as, as I'm sure Keith, you probably wanna have input in.
We'll wrap him right in.
And as I understand, this is, this is really just, uh... It's a working group, not a, uh, not an actual committee. So, they're just basically making...
It'd be less than a quarter of the board, so...
And any changes that would be recommended would be, you know, brought back to the board for, you know, formal, um, review, so... That would be done in a concession. Open for discussion. And other than that, I, you know, again, I'm talking on wood, but we're in, in relatively good shape for the...
At, at this date. You had to throw that in there, didn't you?
No, I think it's fantastic.
Fantastic. I, I know, I agree. Ready for a motion? I'm ready for a motion unless we want to discuss it.
Fantastic job.
I, I agree.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert a warrant article, a warrant... Let me try that again.
Move it tonight, Mr. Carr.
It's this lighting. We gotta turn more lights on here. We gotta get glasses or something, I don't know. Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert in the warrant for the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, an article for fiscal year 2014 capital items from available funds totaling 1,012,799 as recommended by the finance committee.
Move a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we've got, uh, the insert articles on the town warrant, on the warrant for town meeting.
There are some that you might be able to act on tonight, and then you, you have to complete action, uh, next Monday night.
Should we just do all of it next Monday night?
We can do the, um, talk about what happened this afternoon with our highway department.
We reached a...
Yeah, that's true. That's a great point.
We reached a tentative agreement with our, uh, highway, uh, union and subject to, uh, the rank and file ratifying, uh, uh, at the union level, then the board of selectmen can, uh, take up the ratification of the agreement. But it would require us to bring, uh, funding to town, to special town meeting.
So, that's one article I would like to see voted tonight just to show our support on that signing of, uh...
That's actually a great...
The MOA?
Mr. Carr.
And the rest of them, I think we can hold off until we have further action.
Yeah, there's, um, the, the only other ones that you could vote tonight are, um, the Kimball Trust Funds, 14,200. That's been finalized now by...
What article is that?
That is, um, eight, article eight.
Can we back up to the, uh, the collective bargaining agreement? It's a special town meeting because it would have to be, a transaction would occur before July 1. Is that why?
Yes, that's why. And when we, um, brought the other three, uh, collective bargaining agreements to town meeting, it was also special, it was a special town meeting in this fiscal year 2013. So, we, we wanna act on it in this fiscal year as year one of a, of a...
It's a three-year contract effective July 1 of 2013, and it's, um, implements all the other issues that we had with the other unions with the 000 cost of living, so... So, Article 8 and Article 4. So, let's, uh, I'll make those motions. Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the warrants for Monday, May 6, 2013, special town meeting, subject to the approval, um, approval asked to by town council. Article 4, uh, fund collective bargaining agreements for the special town meeting.
I think you threw in that.
Well, that's not a special, that's the annual.
Second one.
So, a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert the following articles. Article 8, uh, MH Kimball Trust Fund Grant Fund, 14,200 dollars onto the warrants for the Monday, May 6, 2013, annual town meeting, subject to the approval asked to from, by town council.
I think we could probably do one more on the list so we don't have to do it. There is, uh, Article 30, rescind unused borrowing authorizations. But this is a, this that the finance department, very last one, that the finance department has brought us, which, um, contains amounts that the town has previously borrowed, that we have not expended, and we have to vote to essentially unauthorize the unexpendable balances. They total 305,000 dollars. It takes it off the books.
All right, so Article, also to insert Article 30, rescind unused borrowing authorizations and free forless carbon land purchase, uh, road resurfacing water means, clean lakes, septic system benefits, total of 305,668 cents. We will not need to borrow.
Move a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we can do the rest next week.
All right, uh, annual town report dedication. Let's go to me.
I want to thank Jen for putting together the, uh, narratives. This is a draft, uh, Tash has a draft excerpts from the town reports describing what...
Doing all your research. Nice. Let's talk to her. Okay. I'll look for a motion unless there's any discussion about it.
Move that the board of selectmen to dedicate the 2012 annual town meeting, annual town report to the ongoing service of volunteers, citizens who contribute to all aspects of maintaining the community of Littleton, whose service has been critical in retaining our small-town character and spirit, and to include the list whom we lost in 2012 who served the town in some official capacity, including Reverend Bill Belden, Joseph Carmier, Donald Cousins, Ray Grant, Warren Immerbogur, Frank Mueller, and Ernie Stackpole.
Second.
Move and second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the host community agreement determination...
Yeah, section...
Paragraph three C.
Paragraph three C of the host community agreement that you signed on February first contains a, a provision which says that within a certain number of days following the ZBA decision, the town will certify relative to the ability of the wastewater treatment facility to serve subdivision lots, easement lots, and the non-easement lots. We lift it, and the language that's contained in that paragraph, three C, is lifted whole in a proposed confirmation notice that, that the board would send. You've got a couple of things to support it. Number one, there's a determination's already been made in writing by the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, whose job it is to make the determination to say so. The agreement that, that the selectmen signed said the town would say it, you are the town for the purposes of that agreement, so you're asked essentially to confirm what the building commissioner has said, and with the advice of town council, you are, you know, you are advised to, to do so. That is a condition that's precedent to the payment of the first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under, under the agreement, and you're doing so relying on the advice of town council and the, and the building commissioner. So your motion reflects sort of the why you're doing it, but then the document that you would execute, which is, which is this form that has been left here, would simply recite the language in the, in the agreement that you've already...
And essentially, we're reconfirming a decision that ZBA has made.
Yeah, it's, it's because the ZBA made the decision, it's because the building commissioner has, has ruled, has made his ruling that you, as the town, are able to confirm that that's, that's the case. If those other two events had not occurred, you, you could not make the confirmation. Because they have, then it falls to you under the agreement you signed to, to, to make the confirmation. And the, and the form that's here has been approved by the council.
My only question, where Mr. McCurdy did not vote in favor of the community host agreement, what impact will that have on his vote for this confirmation?
I don't, I don't think it would have any, I think it would have no impact. I would say that, that for consistency's sake, I think I know he's gonna vote, but well, there's, it doesn't, there's no prohibition in participating in the vote.
Gotcha. Ready for a motion?
Ready. Move that the board of selectmen vote, in accordance with paragraph three C of the host community agreement, HCA, dated February eleventh, 2013, Fifteen Great Road LLC, and various owners of the property of Fifteen Great Road, Littleton, as a condition precedent, excuse me, to the payment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by the developer, and relying upon the advice of, and opinions of the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, and town council to execute a written confirmation of the comprehensive permit issued by the zoning board of appeals on February twenty-one, 2013, provides that the subdivision lots, easement lots, and non-easement lots can be connected to and serviced by the wastewater treatment facility as described in the HCA.
Second. Move and second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You need to sign...
Yeah, if you could, if you could take one of those originals and sign them, then that will be enough.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consent...
Did you vote Alex, we're getting asked. Were you a yea or a nay?
I did not vote.
So you abstain.
Are you gonna sign that, Jim?
Yeah, I'm gonna sign it. I'm wondering if you abstain from voting, how do you authorize, be an authorized signature on that?
Remember the board of selectmen? Board of selectmen just made the decision, didn't they?
All right, let's move on here, so we can wrap this up. Consent agenda, we've got a meeting next week, and we've got a meeting the following Monday, correct?
Eighteenth through the twenty-fifth?
Monday.
Monday.
If it's Monday, it's a selectman meeting.
Okay. All right, minutes approval, I don't think you have a quorum to do this. So you'll have to wait till next week, because I was absent and so was Mr. McCurdy. Okay. I'll look for a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Move and second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Have a great night.